Prior to the start of the meeting indicating which agenda item they wish to address. So, we have the public commentary and hope everything will be smooth. So, let's go ahead and call Mr. Mark Science. About Valcones Heights, Red Cross proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is actually regarding the Red Cross proclamation that was read into the record during the last city council meeting. So, the mayor read the proclamation and stood with the representatives of the Red Cross and shared what a valuable partnership we have with the Red Cross. Unfortunately, the mayor neglected to sign that proclamation. So, when it was delivered to the recipient, Daniel Martinez, it was unsigned by the City of Valcones Heights. There's also a letter that the mayor wrote to the Red Cross where he has unilaterally decided to resend that letter from the City of Valcones Heights to the American Red Cross.
If I may add, Mr. Science, please. The public hearing that we're having is strictly related to city business.
The city business.
But your naming me is specifically into this, so you're almost doing a public attack of the mayor in my position. I have nowhere to defend myself. If you want to just place it in name of the city, you can go ahead and continue. If not, I'll have to warn you to stop going where you're at right now. So, this wasn't sent on behalf of the city. Just don't say the mayor because now you're making individual accusations against me. And so, you need to keep it city business. And this won't have you removed from the presidency.
Again, this wasn't sent on behalf of the city. You're saying, but now I'm just telling the mayor Johnny K. Rodriguez.
Yes, and you don't need to, the mayor did this, the mayor did that. Just stick to your subject of what you're talking about without having to point fingers at anybody because that individual does not have the ability to defend himself. Okay? All these accusations, it may not even be true.
I will state that in the public comment period that council does not, is not required to respond to this here, but they may, just as you just did. So, back to this letter. In the letter, the person who wrote it is filing, filed a formal complaint against the Red Cross with the Internal Revenue Service in an attempt to, to show perceived partisanship and political bias. So, he also urges the leadership within the Red Cross to take this, take this matter with, quote, "seriousness it warrants and implement immediate corrective measures to prevent future breaches of professional protocol and regulatory compliance." This person goes on to state, "While I value the positive work your organization has contributed to our community, this issue must be properly addressed before any future collaboration can be considered. I trust that you will take the necessary steps to rectify the situation, and I expect a formal response outlining your corrective actions at your earliest convenience." So, this indicates to me that this individual is considering not having any business with the Red Cross until this matter receives what he believes is appropriate action. So, I believe that is outside the purview of our city to contact organizations such as this and to try to strong arm them into doing things that we want them to do or to take actions that we desire. So, that is my comments on the Red Cross and the proclamation.
Okay, we have another one on here. Events at Red Cross Sound the Alarm.
Yes, I do. So, at the Red Cross events, there was an area where there were many community partners that were presenting information that they had, providing services and information for services that they provide to citizens in Bear County and Valcones Heights. So, I attended along with another council person and an individual from the Planning and Zoning Committee. So, during this event, an individual went to approach the mayor to ask why he wasn't attending the, he was there but not there. He was off in an adjacent parking lot watching from his truck. Frank.
During this, Mr. Science again, I think this is a point of order, even though you're citizens of the parish, you're now discussing an incident that you are not a part of. You have no information of the secondhand information.
I do have some information.
No, but yeah, you would stop interrupting me. You are disrupting the meeting because you are going into an area that is not strictly city business.
I mean, Mayor, you're the one who's interrupting me. You're the one who's interrupting me.
Well, it's because I've already consulted with our counsel or attorney, and he's told me that unless you're just talking about city business, then it's permitted to be talked about in open session. But if you're going to be personally attacking or adding names or an incident that occurred, then you haven't, I'm just saying, you were about ready to because I know what you're saying, where you're going with this. And so, I'm going to tell you again, this is the second time of warning. I'm not going to give you another chance after this. Stick to the city business. So.
Is it an individual name calling or? So. Frank, can I, Mr. Garza, can I get some clarification on that? I'm in public comment period. Can I address?
Under state law, the Open Meetings Act was amended where a member of the public or someone commenting during public comment can criticize the city as a whole. However, individual attacks on individuals is not authorized under state law, and the presiding officer does have the authority to restrain individuals from making personal attacks. The issue here is it is the presiding officer's interpretation as to whether or not they believe that personal attacks are happening, and it is their ruling on that. If the council disagrees and there could be a vote to override the mayor's calling of it, but at this stage, it is the presiding officer's ruling that if personal attacks are happening, they can put a stop to those personal attacks.
Thank you for that clarification. So, I, I can't refer to, I'm sorry. No. No, I'll let that go. We'll bring it up in a different one. The third item I wanted to talk about was a, a letter that I received or my, my business received. I work at USAA, and a anonymous letter was submitted. I had to submit it because I wasn't able to have a copy of it due to confidentiality. So, it was a request for inquiry into me and my activities as a councilperson here. In the letter, it claims that I spent a lot of time at City Hall, special events, and grand openings. It gives a series of dates and event names.
Where I was present.
This letter goes on to claim that I often mentioned my employment at USAA and my certification. It claims, further goes on to claim that I make falsely disparaging statements on my website where I claim, quote, "Falsely pledged to be transparent and straightforward." This letter goes on to claim that I'm lying about, that I was lying about the benefits of the Red Cross Sound the Alarm when I was going door to door to provide information to the residents. It goes on to ask to make sure that I'm following the rules and ethical guidelines that our company provides and requires, and asks if I follow the disclosure about my political activities. It implies heavily that I'm offering and accepting or giving gifts as, as part of my role as a councilperson. It also accuses me of engaging in political activities during working hours and using USAA resources. It implies that I could be making employment decisions about a friend or relative or receiving personal benefits as a result of my position at USAA. It also implies that I could be benefiting financially. Now, in this letter, which I found out recently that a second letter was also submitted to the Red Cross regarding the director there, the executive director there, with similar, similar complaints. In this letter, it includes information that was available only to one person and that this letter really benefits only one person. So, I understand political attacks, okay? I understand that if somebody disagrees with me, they may call me a liar, they may call you an imbecile or idiot. They may curse me out. I'm okay with those things. I'm a man, I can take those, those things. What I'm not okay with is my livelihood being threatened. Contacting my employer, hinting or implying that I am breaking the law or breaking their ethical code of conduct and putting my employment at risk is not acceptable to me. I believe it is beyond dirty politics. This was an attack on, like I said, my livelihood, which is an attack on my wife and is an attack on my children. And again, only one person stands to benefit from this, and only one person had all this And I just believe that anybody that is supporting this person or the people that he supports in this upcoming election are, they really need to take a look at what this person has been doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Science. Appreciate that. We have now this, is it Manny or Lenny? Is Quayron, Mr. Quayron?
Mary.
I'm sorry, how do you pronounce your first name?
Marion.
Marion, excuse me, Marion, I'm sorry. Valcones Heights Partner with Red Cross.
Yeah, if I may, I just wanted to stand Valcones Heights.
Sorry, ma'am, the microphone is not on. Mr. Science, if I may conduct the meeting, tell her she's in her seat. Apologize for standing in your seat.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I couldn't hear what you were saying.
I was talking to Mr. Science. I said if you continue to be disruptive and keep on the rest of what it is, let me conduct the meeting. He doesn't have any meaning to change, just like I did you twice.
I'm sorry to hear the last part.
Okay, thank you so much, sir. Let's go ahead and move on. Yes, ma'am, sorry for the delay.
No problem. The initiative that Valcones Heights had with the Red Cross, I mutually appreciate that. We were provided with some smoke alarms. They came and installed them, who were very professional, and we, these are things that we just don't think about. Thank you. When, you know, there's just things we don't think about when we're trying to do, you know, a task of, okay, what things do we need to protect our property, so to speak? So, when they came, they established them, and this was really good because it brings to light what we need to be looking out for. Also, plus the fact that I have been a 36-year resident here in Valcones Heights, and pretty much, I think this is the first time that we've actually had this initiative. And I think that following through, we should probably do something like that to make the residents aware, right? Especially if there are elderly people out there that can't really get someone to assist them all the time. Now, me having gone, having had an incident where we did lose everything in a house fire, we did not have smoke alarms, I truly believe that if we had had smoke alarms, that would have prevented the, or possibly prevented a catastrophe because I did use my brother to train that. So, it's, it's critical, right? That along with the detectors for, like when you have gas, right? There's gas in the property, we want to make sure that you've got the detectors that are required out there. So, again, thank you very much, Valcones Heights, and in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Quayron, very much. Now, we have Mr. Danny Gias, Proposition A. Do you have a, I'm sorry, Mr. Gias, you didn't put down your residential address? Do you have a residential address?
No, sir.
You don't live anywhere in the city?
No, sir.
You're outside of the city?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Danny Gias. I'm the president of the San Antonio Police Officer Association and vice president of the combined enforcement associates of Texas, Cleveland. With me, I have my vice president of San Antonio Police Officer Association and a director of the also. We are here to stand by our members in the Valcones Police Department. In 2023, our association witnessed firsthand dangers of such a proposition as your Proposition A could happen to the community and the officers in Tepio to protect it. If Proposition A were to pass in Valcones Heights, it would not only impact the police department, but it will also impact the businesses and your citizens. Let's talk about the impact. Valcones Heights would experience a severe shortage in officers. Officers have a tendency to go look to find better employment places for paying benefits, just like this city does, and it would reach out to other small agencies. There would not be enough officers to patrol Valcones Heights. Cities that do not have a collective bargaining agreement have a harder time finding officers to apply and have a hard time keeping officers to stay. It's always a negative impact to staffing. This could cost the city of Valcones more money in overtime with officers that do elect to stay or paying outside agencies to patrol the city. Costs would have to cover man-hours, vehicle maintenance, gas, and equipment that would be needed to be reimbursed to a third-party agency. It would be more cost-effective for the citizens of Valcones, excuse me, Valcones Heights to keep their own police department properly staffed. What do you think the individuals are going to do in this city when they realize that you don't have enough police officers? The city of San Antonio is short-staffed currently. It's no secret. City Council has awarded us with an extra 360 officers over the next five years. It's not enough. Your crime rate will rise. The safety of this community is at risk, and the businesses could lose money once the criminal element realizes that they're not police officers here to take care of their business. In our opinion, and in my opinion, this is just another form of defunding the police. We ask that you not let personal agendas affect your businesses and the safety of your families. We ask the citizens of Valcones Heights today to vote against Proposition A. Thank you.
Okay, we have Nick Tyer. We have Mr. Charles D. White Jr., former councilman, and your citizens to be heard.
Greetings, Council. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. How about that march, Mattens? Pretty good, huh? The president was up here expressing his views, and personally, I take everything he was saying as a scare tactic. Why is it, out of all the small cities in the county, it's just us and San Antonio that have collective bargaining? Castle Hills may have been in there at one time, but I don't think they are anymore. So, the bottom line comes down to budget. It's all about the money. As things are going, with the collective bargaining rates going to go up, it's not sustainable. We will not, we're going to lose employees. We'll have to cut, make cuts with employees somewhere. Chief has been asked repeatedly to get the, what we call it, reserve program going. Nothing much is happening. We've had 26 officers at one time. There are ways to combat the issues that exist. So, I say vote yes for Proposition A. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, very much for that. Mr. Lamar Gillian, 3.4th round, former congressman.
Can you hear me clearly? I'd like to quote two paragraphs, Mayor, from your March newsletter, 34 paragraph. In a recent council meeting, a decision-
As a reminder, just if you're going to talk about the newsletter, just say newsletter instead of like my newsletter. Just read up the newsletter.
It's your input to the newsletter.
I know, but the ruling that our council just gave-
It's a certain attack, and it's just in effect.
I'm just stating the fact because attorney's honor. In your newsletter, you wrote, "In a recent council meeting, a decision was made to issue a $5 million certificate of obligation," excuse me, also known as a CO loan, "which would not require voter approval." This only, this only needs a simple notice of intent, NOI, published locally, in contrast to a general obligation bond, GO, which would have required voter approval on uniform election dates, May and November, offering more citizen transparency. The CO, while quicker, could increase the city's debt and lead to possible higher property taxes. The GO would have involved you, the residents, in the decision-making process, ensuring you are fully informed and aware of the effects of your financial decision and choice. Mr. Mayor, it was a shame that you did not go further in your discussion in the March newsletter comparing the certificates of obligation in CO with the general obligation bonds, GO, for the Hillcrest Street project. Right now, we have a commitment from the Metropolitan Planning Organization for a sum of $5 to $6 million for the Hillcrest project. It requires additional funding from our city to totally fund this project. Here's what I believe you should have explained. If a general obligation bond was placed on the May 2025 election ballot, the result of the bond not being approved, it would have killed the Hillcrest project, and the city would lose the funding from the MPO. Why? Because the city cannot consider another general obligation bond for three years, and the MPO funding would be reprogrammed to another city that was ready to proceed. But more devastating, our city's credibility with the MPO for funding of future projects would definitely be impacted negatively. This, Mayor, are you looking at me again, or are you going to ignore me?
I'm listening to you, I'm writing down everything you're saying.
Please pay attention, Mr.-
I'm paying attention. I'm ready, sir.
This was thoroughly discussed in the council meeting concerning the two funding methods. That is why the council approved using the CO instead of the GO. Mayor, remember, you ran your campaign anchored in a need for full disclosure. What happened to full disclosure in this newsletter? Thank you, Council.
And here, Mr. Jimmy Hernandez. Thank you, Mr. Gias, very much for your comments. Very much appreciate it. Jimmy Hernandez?
Mayor, city council members, chief of police, my name is Jimmy Hernandez, on procedure. I came to talk about Proposition A, and the first thing is, I don't want the police to think that I don't support them. I do support the police. The current situation that our budget is in, we've, we've lost some revenue from, from losing the red light cameras. We've also been in a very, I guess you'd say, bad situation with the loan with them all across the street. So, this has imposed some really big burdens on our budget, and my personal belief is that we can still be competitive with the police officer salaries and raises, but we don't want to be forced to do it because I don't think that would be sustainable. What's going to end up happening is something's going to have to give. If we have to, you know, have these automatic increases, that means something's going to give somewhere else. And if you just remember, just a few shorts, few short months ago, Councilman Science had proposed that we, you know, contract dispatch jobs to save money, and so, we might have to, you know, do something like that, or perhaps our property taxes might have to go up. So, we have to consider what are the effects. It's not that we don't want the police department to have competitive salaries, I just don't think that we have to be forced to do it. I think as the budget allows, we can review and, you know, make, make those COLA adjustments each year. That's what I have to say. So, to the citizens of Valcones Heights, I say vote for Proposition A. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that does it for all the citizens to be heard. I want to thank each and every one of you coming about and bringing up forth the common section, and hopefully you continue your time. Thank you. So, let's move right along. Now, we will go to the presentations. We have a penning of two officers that will be present, a new police officer, Damian Hall, and new police officer, Israel Sandoval, and then we'll move right along to the next item there.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to the council residents, guests here at Valcones Heights. If I could get Damian Hall? He's a 38-year veteran. He doesn't stick out. Thank you. Appreciate it. I'd like to start off with a little quick bio that we asked the officers to share with us. A small introduction that we've done for those of you that haven't been with us before and done this before in the past. So Officer Damian Hall is a San Antonio native and has spent the past six years working law enforcement in the San Antonio area. He has a strong background in diesel life and commercial automobile enforcement, but has experienced a varied range of calls throughout his career. Officer Hall brings to Balcony Heights a strong work ethic, bearing certifications that will help the department grow, and an eagerness to continue learning. In his free time, he enjoys being outdoors with his family, working out, or watching NFL and UFC. He has almost completed his degree and intends on continuing his education in the summer of 2025 at Texas A&amp;M San Antonio, with hope to graduate in the fall of 2026 with his Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration and Accounting. Officer Hall has only been here for a short period of time, but he loves Balcony Heights and the police department. He states the officers are unique and bring different areas of expertise to the department, and everyone maintains the same goals and acts as a team to accomplish their tasks. The culture of the department is strong, and he plans on retiring from the Balcony Heights Police Department. Mayor, council, staff, residents, all our visitors that we have here today, please join me in welcoming Officer Damian Hall to our department.
You have to say something.
So usually, they, they run the family member. I know they probably, we were going to present Officer Hall last month, and I know there's some time conflicts, right? So he's out here to pay him tonight, so I'm going to pay Officer Hall. What an honor, with his badge. And I just see I haven't done this in a long time, so forgive me. You got your best one? I tell you, my eyes aren't what they were when I first came home here in the early 2000s. There you go. Thank you, Mayor, Council. The next officer we have is, well, he actually wanted me to say, you say the best of the last. Officer Israel Sandoval? So, little bio, same thing. We're going to go about it. So Officer Israel Sandoval was born and raised on the south side of San Antonio. The product of a single mother of two children who did her very best of ranging him in the system. Officer Sandoval began his career as an engineering technologist for ten years for Southwest Research Institute. Excelent in his career, Officer Sandoval went on to work for Rainy Therapeutics, mine? Right. Therapeutics, but after one year, after being employed, the entire research and development department that he worked for in San Antonio was shut down. At thirty years, thirty-eight years old, Officer Sandoval decided to pursue his lifelong dream of becoming a police officer. Thanks to his friends and profession, if they led you that way, right? He enrolled into the San Antonio College Law Enforcement Academy and was part of the first full-time class. He began his journey in law enforcement on July 6, 2024, and graduated on December 10, 2024. Officer Sandoval, Officer Sandoval's inspiration, motivation, and support are derived from his significant other, Ms. Ashley. Ms. Ashley, right here.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley.
And I wasn't easy, right? Watching him go through the academy. And of course, we can't forget the most important one, is three baby girl, Adeline? Adeline, if I got that right. Thank you, Adeline. Who we credit all honor and glory, also to God for guiding him through this journey. Mayor, council staff, residents, and our visitors at Balcony Heights today, please join me in welcoming Officer Sandoval to our police department.
I'm a bit more of a talker, so he said a word to me. Mayor, council, and visitors, thank you all for this opportunity. Enjoy it. This is my personal argument, and I plan on sticking around to help provide safety and servant to, to the community. Okay, now that we're done, we welcome both of those officers into our family. And we'll move on now to the presentation by Save-A-Or, San Antonio Board of Realtors. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, citizens in attendance. Tonight, we'll have a presentation from Sabres, San Antonio Board of Realtors. The chairman of the board, Reagan Williams, will be speaking on Sabres behalf. I've had success partnering with members of the organization dealing with grants and market analysis of the communities I serve. I've informed them that I am now in Balcony Heights and being heavily in the heat of development and revitalization. I'm doing some preliminary work with one of their commercial brokers on the Wolden project. And I'd like to read his bio real quick. I'm going to cut it short, but I think it's very important. Reagan Williams, 2025 Sabre Chairman with fifteen years of experience as a dedicated Realtor. Reagan Williams Williamson. Has been a driving force in the real estate industry as the owner and broker of record for home city real estates. Reagan exemplifies leadership, professionalism, and a deep commitment to his clients and community. Reagan serves the San Antonio Board of Realtors Sabre, includes leadership on certain key committees, notably as chair of both the MLS Committee and the Housing Forecast Committee. His contributions reflect a passion for advancing the profession and supporting fellow Realtors. One of the, the things that we're dealing with here, of course, is rebranding and revitalization of our community. We're passionate about the things that we, we do here, as you can tell by the citizens' comments and things that are going on. Don't let that worry you because we're working on improvement, right? And when we work on improvements like that, you know, everybody has an idea. Sometimes we don't agree, but we'll agree to disagree till we can get where we need to. So our focus is collaborating with you and seeing what we can do on market analysis of our area, what you see as trends, and what we can do to market the city of Balcony Heights. Thank you, sir. Thanks, man.
Okay, do we have the presentation up?
They're bringing it up soon.
Is this one? I mean, okay. Okay, so we'll just get something in. This will be about thirty, forty-five minutes. I'm sure we have all the questions and answers for you guys. My name is Reagan Williamson. I am the chairman for the San Antonio Board of Realtors for 2025. And I am also a husband, a father of four, and a seventh-generation Texan. So I think those are kind of important to point out, and just being the board chair. I also want to point out San Antonio Board of Realtors legacy here, serving the community of over a hundred-plus years. So we are a large trade organization now and are happy for our law, judgment, and servitude to the community and to the city of San Antonio. As you can see here, we're serving the integrity of the trust, encourage growth, and empower our communities. And that includes all our communities, including the municipalities such as yours. Okay, so we are representing, like I mentioned, over thirteen thousand members. I don't want the labor unit to read the slide throughout San Antonio and surrounding counties. So that Save-A-Or has a strong advocacy arm at the local, state, and national levels. As an example, I will be heading up to Austin with Martin and a whole bunch of other Realtors on Wednesday, which is the Realtor Day at the Capitol. We'll have thousands of Realtors descend and visit with local lawmakers and talk about policy and homeownership and all of the other important things that we work on. So that'll be a great Wednesday. We'll be representing all of your citizens of your community as well when we're there at the state Capitol. We have created key partnerships with various cities, working towards protecting private property rights as well. And we can go on to our mission here. We, I work on this right here. This is, this is part of our strategic plan. You can really get, you know, drilled into wordsmithing, but really distill it down to the pure essence of what we feel our mission is, educating and empowering consumers and Realtors. And empowering consumers is really important there too. I just wanted to point that out. Sure, I'll thank you for that slide. Let's see, membership breakdown. So we've got, as I had mentioned, thirteen thousand four hundred and forty-seven Realtors serving the community. We have two hundred and forty-three affiliates. Affiliates are people that are involved in the real estate industry, such as title companies or, you know, home warranty companies or people taking inspections for properties. And then we have over fourteen thousand and thirty subscribers to our MLS. And we're, again, you know, the driving force to come to growth and development and truly back our local community here. And this is just, I wanted to show you kind of our jurisdiction, our current reach, eleven different counties. And we have seen some expansive growth, both down into D County as well as in the Valley. So we are continuing our South Texas push to support more and more communities as we continue to grow our footprint and, again, represent as well. Save-A-Or in the news. Again, you can see some of the things we've accomplished here, and if you can't read that, neither can I. San Antonio Board of Realtors asks the city residents to send a call for actions to the council of closed tax relief homeowners. And as you can see, we've wrote about Prop A, and maybe one of the solutions would be to increase property taxes to cover some of those things for Prop A. Actually, if that's not the case, we are all for, you know, creating generational wealth. If you start to increase homeownership, you'd lessen the chance of that generational wealth being successful. And that's one of the greatest transfers that we have through homeownership is creating that generational wealth for you all. And then also on our tax relief, I wanted to, you know, show, show that slide there. This, again, is our final slide here, working with cities. Again, I want to point out, Andy, you know, we were successful working with Forestville. Put in that city park was at about thirty-five thousand dollars. It was a collaboration.
I think it was up to sixty when we finished up. About sixty thousand.
Really got the checkbook working.
Oh, we, your, your staff members, they're doing an awesome job. As long as you promote what it's going to be for, and they see the vision and they see the things that we can do. We've got two parks here that, that are in need of some help, and I think that this would be ideal.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Glad you're here at Balcony Heights. You're going to be a driving force for this city. Again...
I was going to ask if we could get that QR code back.
Yes, absolutely. Bring the QR code back. I'd please take, take you to that. So we, we, it's really important to know that we really work with our communities hand in hand, and we invest back into our communities. So that's why we're working, you know, looking forward to working with Andy as well as the city of Balcony Heights. However, we can help you all continue your community growth and expansion. I heard a lot of comments earlier about what's on y'all's plate. So we are here to advocate for you all. That's one of the things that we, we try to insert advocacy for homeowners and working with communities at this figure time. Again, y'all are getting a break here because I'm kind of about twenty minutes short, but I'm happy. Happy to encourage that we continue this collaboration. And just I want to reiterate that Save-A-Or is here to be a resource for the city of Balcony Heights. However, we can do that for y'all. Please reach out. Martin's going to be a fantastic word contact. Or you've had all those socials up there. You can reach out today. Or if you want to reach out to me, you can, you can email me at chairman@savea.com. Anybody in this room, so chairman@savea.com. Happy to help. And I'm also happy to take any questions if anybody has any questions. If not, then I'll let you all get on to your business because that was a fiery start to the history of your company. There's nothing. There's nothing. I'll come back. Any questions for us? Thank you all for your time this evening. I'll order a way. Now we have Women's Day proclamation. Women's Day proclamation.
Mayor, if you may, if I may, one of the things that I'd ask if you can just talk a little bit about the events that have been going on and how, how awesome everything is that we've seen and been able to bring to the community.
So last week, Andy and I, Mr. Johnson...
Mayor, your microphone, please.
Last week.
Thank you.
Mr. Johnson and I went to meet with Ms. Adami, who's the tax clerk, the Verkana tax clerk. And she had a Women's Day event. And it was a wonderful group that was there that's been very, very productive and proactive and empowering women. And there was a lady there from Africa, this is her country of origin. And there was an incredible story that she provided to us about how she came here with nothing, penniless and, you know, just barely making it in these meets. And she thought there were going to be other women like her, is what she saw here in the country. So she started a outreach program, religious outreach program. And that grew into a pilot program in which she started doing other things besides spiritual help. They also did events and, and certain benefits that these women took away for taking women that were being trafficked and human trafficking and being used for sex as prostitution. She'd take them off the street and give them an opportunity. So it was very enlightening what she brought forward. And then Congressman Henry Cuero was there as well. And he gave a very nice speech in support and read a proclamation from the Congress there at the event. And Mr. Johnson, you want to add anything else on there?
One thing that I want the council and the citizens to know that what I took away from that, of course, is my wife is, is, is a powerhouse herself, a city administrator and a home city, doing a good job. But the same lady ended her presentation with, "Sometimes I get so wrapped up in what's going on." She says, "I want to fight." And she says, "God told me, I didn't put you there to fight. I put you there to serve, to protect, and to do better." And that resonates in something that I think that we have to take into account here, right? And, and I know we can do it. So enough preaching, but I think it was a good message.
It was, and I think she ended with the last statement saying, "At that point, she just let God handle it." And it put her in all positions, I think, to be to get the things done that she dreamed of doing for the community. So she was a fantastic success story. Other ladies were there in different capacities, vice presidents of corporations. These ladies started from nothing and they grew into something. And they run these organizations in a very professional manner. So more power to the ladies and the women who are the city of this country. So with that, let me read the proclamation. "Whereas Congress designated the month of March as Women's Day, recognizing American women of very ethnic background, culture, and class have made historic contributions to the growth and the strength of our nation. Whereas women serve in our community in many places, including businesses, nonprofits, government, entrepreneurship. And whereas women have historically, still today, performed a significant amount of work, including at home, and we recognize and honor the substantial contributions that support families in our community. And whereas Balcony Heights women deserve our continued support, respect, and admiration. Now therefore, I, Johnny A. Rodriguez Jr., Mayor of the city of Balcony Heights, Texas, do recognize and proclaim March 24th, 2025 as Balcony Heights Women's Day." So let's give a round of applause to all the ladies. You have gifts, everyone, to your wives, your fiance, your sister-in-law, and others that have made a great impact in your life as well.
You want to take a picture, Mayor?
Sure, and thanks staff for, for putting this gift, this gift. Yeah, really nice.
For New York?
I have.
Will we take a picture? We can just end up in the front or an audience corner.
Come on around, please, if you want. Any of the ladies want to take a picture? Come on up. Because y'all are the women that make this happen. Because y'all are the women that make this happen.
No ladies. Mika.
Wherever y'all want to. Right here, in front?
Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay.
Standing where they're... The council's welcome to take a picture.
The council, you're welcome to come. If you want to take pictures, we just wanted to... You want to stand here? Do you want to come?
Yeah, so you can be the... Can you take a picture? Show me.
We'll stand back here.
So you can be in the...
I can get a camera.
All right, I'm going to go. Let's go. Is she supposed to take the picture?
Want to move the mic down?
Frank, is that your phone?
No. Three, two, one. Three, two, one.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Andy, can you get an official?
It's temporary. Next month, you're going to have to write in here. Oh my God.
Mayor, if I may, if I may, I want to learn a topic about women and the Christian...
Oh, sure.
I'd just like to, well, recognize some of the women that I know in the city. I'm sure there's plenty more out there, but I know one of those ladies that stands out to me is Madeline Slade, business owner, engineer, very capable with her money and helping the city in any way she can perform, so thank her to her. And then the other lady in council mind is Mayor Meritas of San Antonio. Just recently, she was inducted into the VIA Board of Trustees, so congratulations to her and all the ladies that are doing a wonderful job. Thank you.
All right. Now let's move into the business of the consent agenda items. The approval of the minutes for special meeting February 3rd, 2025. Has everybody looked at those? Anybody see any corrections? The minute is a short meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes, if you want to do them all at once. May I be recognized as a gentleman? Go ahead, Councilman Simon. Make a move to motion. I'll make, move to make a motion to approve all of the consented agenda items in their entirety. I can have some question on some of the arguments. So you want to take a second? So let's take a second to that. We have a second to this motion, and then we'll call for discussion.
Five seconds.
We have the minutes, the minutes. Okay, Councilman Valverde, the second. Okay? Anybody have any questions regarding the minutes, further discussion? Finance report? Okay, so I want to have, and I just have a quick question regarding the Traffic Safety Fund. So in the Traffic Safety Fund, we were approved in 2025, ninety-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars. It comes out of that Traffic Safety Fund. We have a total revenue of six hundred and seventy-five, two sixty-seven. The Traffic Safety Department, what are those salaries for? Are those other officers that we have funded under that? Are they police officers?
Mayor, for FY '25, the Traffic Safety Fund has been closed out.
It has been completely closed out?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It was into the general.
So the Traffic Safety Department and salaries, that's the one where we had our camera? Or no, was the other?
Yeah, that's the red, also notice the red light camera.
Okay, so this Traffic Safety, that's where that came from. Now, I'm getting a little confused, because I saw it under crime control, and now I see the Traffic Safety Fund. So on the Traffic Safety Fund, that's where it falls under correct, in general, the Traffic Safety Fund. So six seventy-five, two sixty-seven, page thirteen of twenty-two?
The Traffic Safety Fund is that, that's the last thing.
Yeah, right, that's good. So both of those are closed out. They're one and, one and one, right? And so that revenue, the rest of the red light cameras, leftover money that we have?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what I was going to try to get to. And did that money get deposited to the, the rest of it in the general operating, or were you completely completed?
There was a fund balance after the audit was completed. In fact, that's going to be on the next phase of the...
Okay, and just, how much was that funded?
Like I said, it was a remaining balance of seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars.
Okay. And that went into the general operating?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and given that, the Crime Control and Prevention Fund, that one still exists? It shows here a million twenty-one in the 2025 approved budget, correct? And out of that, we've got five hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars going to salaries. Can you tell us how many officers are funded through this?
It's by percentage now, Mayor, so it's probably a roughly eighty, but fifty-five percent of the officer salaries are paid in the general fund, and forty-five percent are paid in this fund, which would be roughly eight officers.
Okay, and which officers, or what, which exact positions did that fund?
No exact position there, again, it's by percentage, so all of the officer salaries, forty-five percent of that would be in this.
I'm sorry, repeat that for me again?
All the officers are paid in the general fund...
Correct.
And in this one. Fifty-five percent in the general fund, forty-five percent in this.
So we wanted to know how much we're allocating, and all we do is multiply forty-five percent times the what?
Or you can just look at the five-ten and add that to it, or so, eight hundred and sixty-six thousand plus whatever shows on the five-ten would be the officers.
So you can't tell me exactly, like, it's funding two corporal positions, one lieutenant position, one...
I can tell you, sir, it's funding seventeen point five positions, which is two of forty-five percent.
Seventeen point five?
Point five. The little hammerhead in there.
Okay. What was that last time? I'm sorry? You're making a joke?
The point five.
Okay. And then the Hotel Occupants and Tax Fund, we have salaries of ninety-four thousand, six fifty-four. Can you tell me where that comes from? Is that, was Mrs. Stent's old position?
So again, as we, as we passed in our last meeting, we're discouraging your budget cycle.
Could you speak up just a little bit louder? I can barely hear you.
Yeah, I don't think this is important.
Yeah, just raise your voice.
So with this fund, twenty percent of administrative costs of the salaries for the administrative people will come out of the Hotel Occupancy Fund, and eighty percent will come out of the four-ten, the department four-ten in the general. So much like the police are segregated out due to a different percentage, and so it is the Hotel Occupants and Tax.
Okay, so then out of that, twenty-four, we have a million, a hundred and twenty-one thousand personnel expense, and now we have a hundred and eighteen, seven sixty-two, and for a total of one eighty-seven, correct?
So it's expensive, yes, sir.
So we're twenty percent, correct?
Yes, sir.
And it goes directly to the general operating fund to fund the others. And then we have the Empower Fund. We have revenues that I show here in 2025, projected ninety-five, six fifty, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it's also showing that you're going to be spending ninety-five thousand, six hundred and twenty, and you're going to spend everything out of it?
Correct, and so there, typically when we do a budget balance, again, we're going to try to show revenues equaling expenses. Obviously, hopefully, we'll bring in more revenue than most expenses, but typically that's our show of balance, but where revenues equal expenses.
Because you have an estimated fund balance of twenty-nine, two thirty-seven, and it's like the funds, you're spinning more than you're taking in on your Empower fees. You've got a hundred and seven, three hun, well, ninety-five, six fifty is what you're projecting, and so you're doing that to balance out. Previous year, you had a hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars in expenses, and then we had revenues of seventy-seven thousand, three sixteen. So now, for purposes of balancing the budget for right now, you're leveling out at ninety-five and change to ninety-five, six fifty, right?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
And on the Auction Fund, the administration fees on page seventeen and twenty-two is five thousand dollars. What's that going to?
It's going to our auction year for providing auctioneer services. We try to have three or four auctions a year for the number of cars that's there.
And then you have other professional expenses there, not actually listed for what, but it's thirty-five hundred for this year, twenty, for professional services. Is that legal?
No, sir, it's a WAG, actually. Again, just to balance out so that revenues will equal expenses.
A LAG?
A WAG, I guess.
A WAG, okay. And term for WAG is what?
I have no idea what that is, to be honest with you. It is something that budget people use all the time to say, "Hey, it's a guess, it's just a number to plug into balance here." It's a big question.
So it's a guess, okay, WAG. Okay, and that does it for me on that. I just wanted to get some ideas considering Mr. Jovlin, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
For the benefit of the entire council, I know some council members have asked me, "What is your plans for budgeting this year? How have you done it before?" Floyd did inform me that past administration pretty much ran with it and drafted it and put it together and presented it. I think this year, we will be more inclusive with the city council as we move forward to ensure that you're, you are part of the process a little bit more. In Forestville, when we got into a predicament like we may be now or headed towards now, we reverted back to a zero-based budget, which is scratch everything from what it was before, how much are we actually going to need, and look for it. It's a little bit more tedious process and involves a lot more time. I don't know if we're ready for that this time, but you will be involved more in the budget process so that you know how it will work. Floyd was very capable. He and I have talked about things. He's open to my ideas of budgeting, so I think that once we move forward, we'll present it that way to say, "Hey, let's take a deeper look and forecast more appropriately and move forward from that end."
Okay, sir, thank you.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, Mr. Jovlin, yes, that is part of the women...
Mayor, excuse me. We're going beyond a little of the consent agenda, and so I was going to cut...
Thank you. So, thank you for telling.
Okay, so we have a motion second to approve. Before the consent, so does anyone else have any other questions on the consent agenda? Amendments, finances, anything that's been posted on? Okay, so let's call for the vote. Councilman Valverde?
Yeah.
Councilman Simon?
Yeah.
Councilman Sayad?
Yeah.
Councilman Sellers?
Yeah.
And Councilman Verdi?
Yeah.
Okay, motion passed by, we'll, Dr. Jovlin, the minutes. And the approval of minutes of February 3rd, February 24th, and the finance report in February 2025, to be clear. Okay, moving on to item number two, discussion and action.
Item number one, Mayor.
We're going to move and consider an action to adopt an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2024 to 2025 budget. Floyd, pass it.
Mr. Mayor and Council, as most of you all know, we typically ask for budget amendment twice a year, once in the spring around this time after the prior year audit has been completed, and that was completed last month. And then usually in the fall, October or November, just before the next budget, or before the next audit kicks off. Most of these budget amendments are rather mundane, they're just more dotting the i's and crossing the t's. It's a matter of bookkeeping for me, and this budget amendment is up to all that hype as well. But with this budget amendment, Mayor Council, we're asking to amend the budget to two hundred and eighty thousand, ninety-six dollars, which would be an increase to the total budget of both revenues and expenses for eighty thousand dollars. So in other words, this budget amendment is balanced. We're not asking for more of the expenses than revenues, that all zeros out. On your chart here, you can see, these are all the accounts. There's not a whole lot of them, but these are the ones that we're asking to amend. A lot of these amendments are really to decrease one expense in a fund or a department just to increase another one. These amendments are needed because council approves a budget every year, and that by law tells me what I can spend and what revenue I can bring in. But after the budget has passed, in the course of time, other revenues come in that we hadn't planned on, and other expenses, and so we amend the budget accordingly. So for instance, you'll see the engineering services for Crestview about halfway down the chart. In our budget, we initially budgeted a hundred and sixty-nine thousand for Crestview One, which at the time was just finishing up. So we don't need to budget any money for Crestview One, that project's already done. Crestview Two, however, is coming up, and so we're asking, let's kill that hundred and sixty-nine thousand to Crestview One, because the project's already done, and let's move it to a new line item for Crestview Phase Two. Rather simple thing, but for historical purposes and for transparency, it's for Phase Two, not Phase One. And the same for those under it, we're just asking to lower one expense and raise another because an expense popped up that needed to be noticed or recognized. The most interesting one on here is the seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollar transfer that the mayor was bringing up earlier from the Red Light Cameras Fund or the Traffic Safety Fund. So the, as that fund has now closed out and the audit is completed, we now know the final number that was left over in the fund, and that was the seventy-nine, three, four, six. So this budget amendment will allow me to move it out of the Red Light Camera Fund on an expense line and move it into the general fund on our revenue line. So this budget amendment is in essence creating or authorizing me to open an expense line in traffic safety and a new reva line, a new revenue line in the general fund so that we can make that transfer. And so up at the top, Fund Twenty-Six, we received a forestry grant after the budget had been approved. We want to recognize two hundred and fifty bucks there, that was the revenue. Whenever you have a grant, you have to match the expenses to it, so we need to amend the budget, two hundred and fifty dollars in that fund. And the same for the sewer fund. It's just a matter of increasing one to increase, or decreasing one to increase another. That's a lot, but again, overall, the whole thing here is that we're increasing total budget revenues, eighty thousand, ninety-six dollars. Most of it, seventy-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars will be in the general fund. And with that, if you have any questions, you also have the journal answering that was made due to this, and the ordinance that goes on. Glad to take any questions.
Any council members have any questions? I have one, Floyd. Do you have one, Mayor? Go ahead, please.
On the salaries, those of ten, six-ten, one-fifty, and ten, four-ten, one-fifty, are those, are those PD or...
With the six-ten department, that is a community development, and we initially did not budget any part-time salaries as we should have, or as I should have, and so we're asking to decrease the overall salary number and give it to the part-time salary.
And then the four-ten, one-fifty?
Second from the bottom. Oh, yeah, from the bottom. Yes, sir, the same there. We did not budget overtime in the administrative department, and so we're asking to decrease salaries overall by one thousand and increase overtime. And so again, the department budget remains the same, it's just reality. Yes, sir.
So the transfers in on the transfer from the Empower... So the transfers in on the transfer from the impound, not worried about last year, but to twenty-twenty-five, you've got sixty thousand from the impound, and then you have transferred from the auction, seventy, so which means you have a total transfer of a hundred and thirty thousand. With that money coming in, the transfers you're making over from the Crime Control Budget over into the General Operating Budget, at the percentage you're coming in at, and then other areas that your point of order, those aren't referenced in this amended budget? Okay, well, I'm just trying to see if I can make a point, the point of order made in, certainly. So basically, I want to make sure that I understand that these transfers are going into the General Operating Budget, this increased budget amendment.
Point of order, that's not on the, on the general.
As you said, a budget amendment, sir. Quit interrupting me, please.
That's the point of order.
But you have the point of order to be one.
You're not talking about what's in the business item.
Would you please let me finish? Councilman Sines will continue to interrupt me, but your point of order, the second time, has been noted, and I overruled. Okay?
I call for an appeal.
Alan, you gotta continue to disrupt the meeting like this, sir? Please stop. Let us go through the meeting and finish. We never can get through a meeting while you're just complaining.
Roberts' rules of orders states that we need to talk about the items that are on the business agenda. This is not on the agenda.
We just want to move forward. I'm just trying to find out, a simple question on the budget, you know, with the amendments and what's causing them, whether it's coming in from a certain fund or not.
I understand that if your questions are related to the specific amendments, yes, you may proceed.
In other words, these other items that are contributory to it is causing us to have to do the amendments. And that's what I was just asking, you wanted to find out, is that what it is that we're short on certain budgets now because they were not properly, or not properly, we just say they weren't funded at the right amount, so you had to refund them again at the amendment amount, correct? In order to make it balanced?
Going back to the auction and impound, that has nothing to do with this budget amendment.
I guess the point I was trying to make is we're transferring funds over into the General Operating Fund because we need money, just like we did the five-hundred thousand.
Well, we always need money, but the purpose of this specific one is because the Traffic Safety Fund is closed. It's gotta go somewhere. Our General Fund is your biggest, most important fund, so it makes sense to put it there. But these are because, like I said, accounts opened up that you couldn't foresee or maybe got missed one, and so we're just amending it to not get passed out.
All right. All right, so let's go ahead and let's finish up with the business.
Mayor, I think we'll need a motion.
Yes, that's right. So we'll need these numbers. Do we have a motion on the floor to consider this?
Motion to approve orders to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget.
Okay, do we have a second? If we have a second, we have a second. Let's go ahead and call a vote. I'll let go of Mr. Burton.
Aye.
Mr. Sellers?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. DeSey?
Aye.
Mr. Sines?
Yay.
Mr. Vabere?
Yay.
Five-o, motion carries.
Thank you.
The ordinance to amend the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five. Okay, now, item number two, discussion and action to consider the application received from Tom Brady for the planning of his own foundation to be often determined March twenty-twenty-five through twenty-twenty-six. Mr. Brady, is he here? No. Oh, there he is. Come on up here.
Yes, Councilmembers. I'm all ears.
Hello, Mr. Brady. So we want to thank you so much for volunteering. I guess you can never get, you know, volunteers to volunteer for the boards. So I thank you for stepping forward and doing that. And in any way whatsoever, in any reports we may have, keep looking at them and see if they're available, because you always need somebody, pretty much, so. So that's pretty much it. I mean, we have a motion to go ahead and approve Mr. Tom Brady for the.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Councilman Sellers made a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, fine, we'll second it. Okay, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Burton?
Yeah.
Mr. Sellers?
Yeah.
Mr. DeSey?
Yeah.
Mr. Sines?
Yeah.
Mr. Vabere?
Yeah.
Five-o, unanimously, you have now been appointed as an entrepreneur.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom. Step in out.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Okay, we have item number three, discussion and possible action to enter in a memorandum of understanding, MOU between Bear County, the City of Balcony Heights, and Haven for Hope. Mr. Johnson, go.
Thank you, Mayor. As soon as I started talking about this and sending out a draft agenda, it was, I got a million questions about this because it's a source of contention to some extent. What we're trying to do or what I'm bringing in for, and I've got a member of the Bear County Economic Development here with me, again, is focused on transformation and revitalization of our community. In regards to the discussion and possible action to enter the memorandum of understanding between Bear County, the City of Balcony Heights, and Haven for Hope, I spoke with Robert H. Reyna with Bear County about the MOU. The purpose of the street outreach is to identify homeless individuals, inquire about their needs, provide them services, and potentially relocate them to a better environment. I followed up with Leon Valley City Manager Crystal Taldeira. As they were identified as a current partner with Bear County and Haven for Hope, she relayed that a large number of individuals were noted as success stories utilizing the program. She did mention that the project was ongoing and the true results were yet to be realized. Realized. She said that her council approved the MOU as a humanitarian initiative and is a sign that they were not just neglecting the issue. So I'll ask the Bear County Representatives to come over and give you a couple of talks about the program. Again, it's another initiative. I think that the council is looking forward to during our rebranding, revitalization, and of course, the humanitarian issues associated with it.
Good evening, council members. My name is Anne Marie Emmett, and I am a specialist with economic and community development. Thank you so much for having me. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Robert H. Reyna, Community Development Director, and he was unable to join us this evening due to a scheduling conflict. I'm here to advocate for the city council to direct staff to negotiate an MOU between the city, Bear County, and Haven for Hope to expand the homeless street outreach initiative. A short overview of the program is currently, Bear County has committed two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars in federal funds to establish a pilot street outreach program targeting unhoused populations in unincorporated areas, which include Leon Valley currently. We hope that moving forward, we can enter this MOU of Balcony Heights. The program identifies and engages with unhoused individuals, providing wraparound services such as case management, shelter referrals, and other critical resources. Currently, what we are requesting from the city, firstly, no financial commitment is required from the city. We hope to share encampment location data to support street outreach efforts and provide emergency services when needed to enhance the program's impact. If approved today, we will coordinate with the city administrator and Haven for Hope to establish MOU terms and conditions. To give you just some key stats, right now, this funding supports salaries, outreach supplies, and equipment, and since September twenty-twenty-four, we have successfully transitioned from the streets to the shelter fifty-eight individuals. We hope to expand this program to converse live in areas with increases one and three. We appreciate your time and consideration. This initiative presents an opportunity to strengthen our collaborative efforts in addressing homelessness while ensuring those need to receive the necessary support they deserve. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have or take them to Mr. Reyna, who can provide you with further clarification.
I think that's big for all the residents, but if we enter into this, where in Balcony Heights are you going to put up shop for this? Where are you gonna house them? Where are you gonna feed them?
So we would be coordinating that with, in conjunction with Haven for Hope. So the way this works is that they have a street outreach team. They send their team out to meet with the unhoused and the sheltered, and they develop relationships, and hopefully what produces is that we get more people off the street and into, into shelter, whether that be Haven, Haven for Hope on a temporary basis or as the goal is to get them into, you know, permanent housing.
What dollar amount has this got cost Balcony Heights?
It won't cost anything.
Okay. I think you dodged my question, but thank you very much.
Councilman Burton? Sines?
Yes, sir. I know we had this similar presentation maybe a couple of years ago, and the concern we had was there was no initial upfront cost, but then there would be a cost afterwards. Is this still the same program or is this something different?
I would have to check in on that with Mr. Reyna to see if this is, if this is the same contract that you had talked about before, but is my understanding that we are funding it through, through federal funds?
Yep. Councilman, I can tell you that per the agreement that I reviewed, that the MOU, there is no cost to the city whatsoever. And either before or after, there's just no cost. And my understanding of the program is if there are homeless in Balcony Heights, they will send them here to try to convince them to go to the Haven for Hope facility or to get services. They're not planning to create a housing entity here in Balcony, but simply try to convince them to go get services at Haven for Hope.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
And I think y'all make it very clear on your section five of your general provision. This MOU is a non-binding agreement and does not create any legal or financial obligations among the party, the owner, that has stated here. But pretty clear for the general provisions. Mayor, you have questions? Councilman Burton, go ahead.
Yes. Last, last year, we, I can't remember if it was, I think it was Haven for Hope, we were looking at funding for apartments here or something for, it was when Mr. Peralos was city administrator.
Yeah, that was a totally different program. Totally different.
Is that still ongoing or?
I'm not aware. I don't believe so.
And does, does this merge with our, our police department? I mean, if, does, let's say we, we notice an encampment and I, someone contacts, contacts PD, do they, do they contact you to send somebody out or?
Yes. What we would like is to establish a collaborative effort between the street outreach team and Haven for Hope and the county to identify where unsheltered participants are and hopefully utilize, in conjunction, the patrol and local law enforcement to create a collaborative effort. It will, I think it will definitely create, help create relationships and help the officers in identifying those who are housed, and they can help establish them into other housing.
Just for my curiosity, is this a, they contact them and it's, it's an immediate response or is it like a twenty-four-hour response or is it a?
The, the functions of the program and how, how the program works and the contact, that is something that we can iron out with, when we discuss the program further.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. I'm just, I'm a little confused here, but I, and I have to ask these questions, and this is more for the city, but do we actually have any resources to work with homeless? That's the first question, other than PD. And I know there's gonna be some paperwork and stuff involving this. And do we actually, do we actually have locations of homeless in this city? As far as I know, I think we're pretty much clean. I mean, we do have problems here and there, but they're, they're eliminated.
Yes, sir, you're spot on, Councilman Vabere. There are places that the officers try to stay on by doing their patrols through the residential and the business area, but we do get notified by business owners or passerby that, you know, there's a cap or set up. The recent, more recent one was when we had the, the young gentleman under I-ten that they found. So we noticed that he had been there probably for, probably a week, maybe two, and he was far up in, under the underpass. But, and the first question you had answered, the only thing that we rely on is if there's availability until, like Haven for Hope during the winter times, we just noticed that if, incorrect, if I'm wrong, but usually like our night shift is the one that comes across a lot of the homeless people. The shelters are usually at capacity, and a lot of the times we encounter are mental health, or they're in need of some type of medical needs, so can't force them to go, so we, we try to assist them to medical facilities, and if they deny and they don't want to, we just try to move them, I'll be totally honest, we just try to move them out of Balcony Heights if they don't want any assistance with us on our, on the PD side. I, I think this would be a great tool if they're, if you're all more focused and trained into just dealing with, you know, people that are in need of just assistance, that could tremendously help us, even, I, I'm not sure, I mean, you said you were going to, we'll be getting to the specifics later, but transporting is a lot of, like a burden for us, especially if we're not dealing with a good night where we have three officers on, and it's two that leaves the city just with one, but, yes, sir.
Yeah, that was one of my concerns because sometimes we only have two officers on duty, and, you know, this is gonna create more work on them, and that's gonna be less petroleum over here and leaving one officer uncovered. So those, those are my concerns. That's the only thing I was going to make clear.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
Very good questions. One of the things that, that led to us here today talking about this was the individual that was found under I-ten. When the group came out here to, to try to assist them, they located, they took a ride around our town, and I think Councilman Burton had mentioned some of the areas that, that they typically are at, and this was brought to my attention. So I, I think it's something that if we can get the resources, like the, the councilman said, with assistance, knowing that we are limited on staff, I think this is a good thing, if we can start trying to explore that. If this MOU results in us getting some assistance, I don't think the, the police department will have a problem with it because they are, you know, takes a specific type of training to be able to deal with, with individuals like this.
May I do a, yes, sir. I think this is a very good project. I've been talking to a lot of residents illegally, and homelessness is an issue that they've brought up consistently. So if we can enter, enter into this memorandum of understanding to develop this, this initiative, I believe it'll be a very good program for our city, for the residents, and for the people that are experiencing homelessness, so that they can get the assistance that they need. It'll also relieve some of the burden that our police officers are experiencing in addressing those, those individuals. So I believe this is an action item, so I would make a motion to approve or ask the city administration to enter into the memorandum of understanding between Balcony Heights, Bear County, and Haven for Hope.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Second, okay, do we have any further discussion? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Mr. Burton?
Yeah.
Mr. Sellers?
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
And Mr. DeSalle?
Yes.
Mr. Sine?
Yes.
Mr. Valbede?
Yes.
Motion carries by all. Announce. No need.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers.
All right, we're gonna move on now to item number four. Consideration and possible action to direct city staff and consultants to commence activities to facilitate the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone, TIRZ, around the area of the city occupied by Wonderland of Americas. Directing the city manager to enter into engagement agreements with consultants and advisors deemed necessary to accomplish the foregoing and other matters in connection there with Clay Benford. But I think Mr. Johnson's done a good presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, citizens. Again, this is a project and a direction by the City Council upon hiring me to move the city in a direction that we need to. We did visit with Clay Benford and, Clay Benford, for the audience, is the attorney for the Economic Development Corporation. He's a bond counsel also. I know that he's had partnerships here. I've had partnerships with him in other cities and value his opinion. I've sat with Mr. Frank here, our city attorney, in regards to the direction that we need to head. We talked about the tax increment reinvestment zone. We talked about locations, how far, is it gonna be the WODA property? Is it gonna expand other areas? What is it gonna take, the process? I think Ms. Lisa was able to send you something from the comptroller's office at last minute, but we got it there. I'll read real quick one moment. It says, "When a municipality or town creates a tax increment reinvestment zone, it records all taxable value of the property within the zone. The year that TIRS is created is a base year. The appraisal value of property within the zone during the base year is a base value. A development or redevelopment occurs. The appraisal value of the property in the zone should increase. The difference between the increased appraisal value of the property in the zone and the base value is a captured appraisal value. Current appraisal value minus base value equals captured appraisal value. Taxes levied and collected on the base value remain with the participating taxing units, which is our general fund. The portion of taxes collected on the captured appraisal value or tax increment is deposited in a tax increment fund. Remedies in the TIF can only be used for the improvement projects in the TIRS areas designated." Long, long-winded, a big project that we're talking about. Again, we're looking at what we're gonna do with that project. The Economic Development Corporation had an executive session meeting where we discussed many things in regards to tax development in general. I have brought this forth for consideration and approval of this council. And this is just formally directing me to do what I've been scratching the circuits about. I think I've talked to several of the councilmen. I've been meeting with developers. I've been looking at this option for us to be able to improve the situation that we're in, both financially and of course, that is a big part of our city and our future. So, it takes collaboration, that's a key word, with professionals in that area. I've done a couple in other municipalities. But it's a lengthy process and I'm here to ask that you approve me moving forward in a formal direction so that I can bring stuff back. This is not allowing me just to enter and to create an TIRS and moving that forward without any further approval. I think I'm gonna ask Frank, just to give you a couple of pointers that we talked about of what it takes to get where we need to be. But if we never formally direct me, then I'm just walking blind through the areas of what you want me to improve on, so. Frank?
Mayor and council, TIRS are controlled by state law, Chapter 301 of the Texas Tax Code. And it's used as a tool by municipalities and counties to try to entice developers to come and put investment into the TIRS area. What I would recommend is if the council is interested, what we would bring back to the council is adoption of TIRS guidelines so that property owners and potential developers will be able to see on the city's website and on the city's EDC website that a TIRS is one of the tools available for a developer to come forward and try to utilize if they meet the guidelines prepared by the city. City of San Antonio uses TIRS throughout the community as well. I just assisted the city of Uvalde doing their first TIRS to try to bring in some home development. And the TIRS that was approved specifically is to reimburse the developer for the streets, the water, the sewage, the drainage requirements and so forth. But with a TIRS, if the developer never puts any money into it, the developer never gets reimbursed. And if the developer only puts in the public improvements but never puts in those private improvements that would increase taxes, again, you end up with a TIRS with public improvements but no reimbursement for the developer. So, it's really on the developer or whoever comes forward to the city saying, "I want a TIRS," for them to submit what they're proposing to do. So, I think a TIRS is a great tool chest to have, to put into your tool chest. It's a great tool to have in your tool chest for economic development purposes. And with action by council to direct the city administrator to move forward and bring back to you possibly guidelines on what you'd like to see TIRS have is something that I would recommend.
Any questions for councilmembers? Councilman Sellers?
Perhaps this question for you. And councilmembers, last year we had a meeting with investors at the mall. And I'd like to know, how is this correlated to those investors in that meeting that we had? Can anybody explain that?
Well, basically, the way, Councilor Garza stated, it's a tool in your arsenal to be able to provide that to the developers. And it basically proves boundaries so that you know specifically where the area of improvement that you're gonna have or development is gonna occur. And it defines it to a developer. So, when they're looking to come to put money and infuse into our city, that tool is used as a TIRZ.
I understand what they're getting at. What I don't understand is the meeting that we had at the mall last year, those investors.
You're referring to the small business owners that have the land?
Yeah, they have the investment. Why weren't those investors here on board with this?
Well, it's not a matter of them being on board, it's no one notified them because they'll be notified later on as we move through the process. That's part of the process. We're gonna, you know, announce it, let the business owners know, that potential investors point in on our website and all that.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Sellers, this, my presentation today is not associated with any developer at this time. I don't, I wasn't at that meeting. I don't know those people.
Yeah, you weren't here, but we had developers there that, I guess it was up to Balcony Heights to initiate the properties for those people to develop. And we never, we never went there.
Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Johnson, do you wanna add something?
No, I, I am.
That's right, you had to go first.
Where would this zone start? Are we just talking to WODA? Are we talking larger WODA or?
And that would be something that we would bring back to the city council. I'm gonna meet with Mr. Benford. I'm gonna discuss the project. And we will develop, all of that is gonna be available to the council and we'll need council approval before we move anything as far as how far that will expand. My focus in speaking with the council during my hiring process was that that specific area was an area of improvement. So, my focus has been there. But of course, we need to consider what are the areas?
Well, the reason for my question was would it be, or could it be part of the Hillcrest business? And if it would, would that help with the construction of Hillcrest? I mean, putting dollars back into the pay for Hillcrest? No, that's a whole separate.
Well, I mean, you could include an area outside the mall. That's a policy decision of the council, what they want to include. You definitely wanna look at areas where you see potential growth and development because that would then make the tax increment increase. The good news is a tax increment increase is only good for the length of time that you want it to or for an amount that you agree. Once the TIRS disappears, that increment now goes to the city. It goes into their coffers, into their tax base and so forth. So, it's really a policy decision how far out you wanna go. One of the examples I can give you is one that I worked on is Brooks. Brooks was an air force base and had no tax. So, when it was converted to, be purchased by the city, they, the TIRS was outside, they added the TIRS so that was just outside the property, the footprint of Brooks. And it actually then included where the Walmart is on that corner now, the Target across the street, the Home Depot. So, that is one of the more successful stories because if you've been around Brooks, you've seen the growth. And that was all generated, all those public improvements were generated through TIRS dollars. So, it really will depend on the council as to how far they want to expand the TIRS. But what you want to definitely take into consideration is where is the growth potential?
And we've gotta be cautious about that because it's real specific on how we can utilize those monies, what we're utilizing those monies for. And like you said, the main thing is the potential for, as we know, the WODA project, that location without the building is prime location, right? So, we just have to get the momentum of getting the things that we've talked about before in that area. I wouldn't recommend, you know, too much of an area unless we know it's gonna be valuable to develop and ensuring that we can still maintain. I know Floyd and I spoke about this and our focus, focus in foremost, is always gonna be Balcony Heights and the citizens of Balcony Heights, right? But we wanna improve their quality of living and we have to leverage the things that we have in our city, which is the mall area and any commercial along or tenant area to help us out.
Mr. DeSalle?
Mr. Councilman Sine, pretty much, if we were to try and put it all back together, we kind of probably got ahead with getting the people to come in and the contractors. We should have had our incentives together and then say, okay, this is what we can offer you if you come in. But we're all working to the same goal, to get us to the next level. But that's probably one of the things that we could have done. But all it is is just another tool for us to be able to incentivize developers to come in. You know, you do this and we'll give you this, that type of deal.
I believe, Mark?
May I be recommended?
Yes, sir.
So, I, thank you, Mr. Johnson, for putting this information together. So, I want to ensure that the council is aware, knows that this is not the creation of TIRS. This is providing guidance to the city administrator to begin looking into it and putting together a package for us to consider for a future TIRS. So, there's no battery set, there's no location set or anything like that. If that's something, that is incumbent on our city administrator to develop along with city staff. So, when he comes with that proposal, that's what we can ask questions, specifically about size of the area, length of the contract, exactly what it entails. So, again, this is merely providing guidance to the city administrator to begin putting this package together for us so we get those details that we need to make a decision on whether or not to do a TIRS.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead. Yeah, I just wanted to say, I believe, from what my understanding, the meeting we had last year at the mall, I believe this is an initiative off from that meeting. I mean, we finally have somebody that's gonna take the initiative to take that meeting then into a plan, you know, and I'm for it. So, if anybody wants to vote on it, that's fine.
Mr. Mowbray, do you have any comments on the TIRS? And Mr. Sine?
Sorry.
No.
So, Councilman Sine is partially right in what he is assessing, but not fully. You look at it with the language, consideration and possible action to direct city staff and consultants to commence activities to facilitate the creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone, TIRZ, around the area of the city occupied by Wonderland of Americas. It's very specific. And directing the city manager to enter into engagement agreements with consultants and advisors deemed necessary to accomplish foregoing and other matters in connection there with. Basically, what he's asking for in the council is the freedom to go forward. And if he has to retain consultants, experts, whoever he has to deal with in order to get it accomplished, that's what we'll do in this particular document. And so, I'm on for it. I'm with my colleagues in the mall for it, 100%. This is just another tool in our arsenal that we can start utilizing now. And like Mr. Sellers said, the initiation started with that one meeting and we're now have somebody to carry forward for us.
So, do I entertain a motion for adoption of this particular item, number four?
So moved.
Okay, Councilman Mowbray has moved. Do we have a second to that motion?
I have a second.
Councilman Valbede, a second. Let's go ahead and do a roll call. Mr. Valbede?
Yes.
Mr. Sines?
Yes.
Mr. DeSalle?
Yes.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes.
Mr. Mowbray?
Yes.
You announce who to approve. Mr. Johnson, you have your orders.
Thank you, sir.
Number five. Department reports, 208, Police Department, Fire Department, Community Development, Economic Development and Public Affairs. Start with Police Department, 208.
No further updates. There's any questions from the reports that have been submitted?
Fire Department?
Nothing to add, I have just questions.
Do you have any status on the Fire Department?
The last I heard was they were repairing some of the operators and they're still working on it, but that was the last I heard.
Anybody else? Do we have anything to Community Development?
Unless you have any other questions from the reports submitted?
Community Development, when you get an opportunity, I'd like to sit and discuss a few different options that I get to work with, with a different municipality as far as the permits, the different permit systems that are about. There's a multitude of them and I think it would benefit greatly if we can start studying how we can implement some of those automated systems.
Are you regarding the software?
Yes, the different software that are there. As a contractor, I deal with all kinds of programs and I see what we're doing and what's on the market. I'd love to get the opportunity to sit with yourself and see administrator and see what we can do to get us to the next level.
Okay, I think that'd be great because we are a little, we are limited somewhat on what we have currently, so.
I did see your report and you're a very busy woman.
Anything else?
If you.
Do we have anything for Economic Development and Public Affairs, Mr. Johnson?
I'm working with Community Affairs right now to try to improve our dissemination of information out to the public. We've got a couple of things that we can do right now, our Facebook, our website. We're gonna start posting more activity within our community because I see it tremendously, but we just don't give ourselves the opportunity to promote the city as much as we should. Economic development wise, this last initiative that I brought forth was positive for the Economic Development Group as I move forward. Again, I'll ask the council, we have the report mechanism right now where the executive team members provide a substantial amount of information to you. If you would like, if the meetings where we don't have a lot to discuss, we can do a full-on presentation like each one up here. I have confidence that they're able to do that, but it depends on what you'd like to see, so. One thing that came out of the Economic Development- One thing that came out of the Economic Development Corporation meeting also was a potential grant through Bear County, again, CBBG dealing with economic development that I had been working with the chairman on to try to finish that up. We were not able to meet the deadline for this meeting, so I spoke with the mayor, I asked the city secretary of the process here, and we posted an agenda for Thursday at 6:00. If we can make that meeting, all it is, is to approve a resolution that I need for that grant application, so. Let me know if that's something that is doable for you. As I informed the council, I must travel to my hometown for a death of a dear friend Wednesday evening, Thursday morning, and I can be back for the meeting Thursday at 6:00 o'clock, if it's doable. Again, a good grant that I work with the chair of the EDC on, this will be a second grant that I can apply for, the other one didn't require a resolution, this one going through the process, it does, so that's all that I have on my...
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, very much.
Does it seem to be posted?
It's been posted.
It's posted.
Anything else?
Not that much.
No, my question. So now that we've finished with the department reports, especially which announcement, comments and requests, number six, announcement, comments by mayor or council members. Anybody have anything else?
February 24th, I mentioned cleaning up the maintenance shed, installing an automatic gate there because of the vagrants and people, and you know, that area is unoccupied while our maintenance crew is out and about, and there's equipment in there, we need a gate there. And I also mentioned about a possible kilt in there, and I mentioned the building next to it, which is overrun with access stuff here. I wanna know if anybody looked into that since February 24th?
I have not, sir. I'm gonna be straightforward with you, we have not looked at that. We have not undertaken that, but it's been duly noted, and we will move on that for sure.
Thank you.
Anyone else there? Take notes and announce.
I'd like you to touch on the American Red Cross function that we had on March, March the 1st. I've got some information that was provided to us.
It's in the minute.
It was a very, very, very successful event, but the numbers that were provided by the American Red Cross, 513 smoke detectors were installed, 800, 181 homes were made safer, eight shaker beds were installed, 502 individuals were impacted, nearly 400 volunteers were present to take care of that, that event. The services that were provided afterwards, or at the community fair, were as alum of colleges, which they provided information on free tuition, the American Red Cross provided more information on volunteering opportunities, Bear County provided safety gun vouchers for people that were there. Blueprint Ministries, they're a organization, mission-based, that helped residents bring their houses up to standard at no cost to the homeowner. Now, this is able, they're able to do this because they're a missionary-based organization, so I've already disseminated some of the information to some of the residents, so that's something that's moving forward. City of Balconies Heights was there along with the fire department, informing people of the events. CPS was present to provide energy conservation and energy vouchers. The Zoma Foundation helped collaboration, Pride Center, RVFCU, San Antonio Fire Department was recruiting, San Antonio Food Bank distributed eight pallets of vegetables to the tune of 1,200 bags of vegetables that went out to the community, so the community was very well-received and accepted those. The United Way was present too, the Balconies Heights VFW was present, and part of this initiative, we connected, myself and the colleagues that were present, connected with the Food Bank. We've already spoken to the administration of the Food Bank, and we're looking forward to hosting a food drive possibly next month. There is gonna be more information coming out, and there's plenty of opportunities for us, the residents, to volunteer and help with the Food Bank. I did speak to one resident that was ecstatic because of his medical condition, was so appreciative of the shaker alarm that was installed in his bed, in case of an event, and he showed me how it works, it's phenomenal, just this ring, it actually shakes, shakes the bed. That's one topic. Another topic that I had, Mr. Johnson, or Mayor, which everybody needs to direct it. I would like to see us implement some kind of a employee recognition program. I think it's critical for the health of the city, for the health of our employees, that we do some kind of employee recognition program, and Mr. Johnson, I'm sure you have plenty of ideas how to help come up and put something like that.
Yes, sir, it's been done in other municipalities, it's something that the council would like, and I'm sure that the employees would be very appreciative of that.
Another comment that I have, under, I think the last couple of months, I've asked for a Chase and Dallas report for the partnership of the Wonderland of the Americas. I know there's a lot of moving parts to that, I'd like to get a timeline as to when we could see something to that effect.
I am going to visit with the WODA partnership. There are reports that are provided, I've been told that they're limited on who is able to get that, I don't know why the council would not be able to get that since you are the majority, or ownership in that. So as soon as I can get clarification as to why I've been told that, that'll be disseminated accordingly.
Great, and it's something that we have to discuss in executive session, and let's do executive sessions, find out where we're at on that program. The one more item that I have, and it's probably gonna be a sorbet, but I was at a conference last week, and it was very puzzling to me to hear that the city of Balconies Heights is working with foreign countries on whatever they're doing without the council having no knowledge. So I'd like to figure out, Mr. Johnson or Mayor, how we can do it, to where we can find out if anybody's working on projects, that at least we're given a heads-up or a general idea of what's being worked on. I know we've mentioned several things that are happening, or we've heard several things that are happening, and the council, in my opinion, we have no idea what's being discussed, what's in the works, so I'd like to find a mechanism to where we're better included in this information.
Duly noted, sir, and that, those things are things that we'll work on. When you work with the Economic Development Corporation on any kind of business ventures, the majority of them, as some of you are business people know, you know, they do not like for us to share information until there is a solid commitment, but I will look at those things on how I work with our city attorney to see how we can update the council periodically on that. Now with your approval of the TIRZ and that, I think it's gonna give me some direction on how I can relay privy information before any kind of major deals are done.
And the last item that I have is just a general reminder that all of us here on the table, the dais, are obligated to follow the city policies and policies and procedures as far as behavior, so that's all, make sure that we follow that, and that we're at our behavior at all times, especially when we're out in public. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have one, but...
Yes, Mr. Sellers?
Perhaps, I'm not sure.
Yes, sir.
I had trouble with my computer, told me to reboot it, turned it off, turned it back on, and when I left, it was still printing, printed over 200 pages. What I noticed right here says, "Co-ordinance Resource Books Are Now In Place." What is that?
The co-ordinances books are now in place? What did you...
Co-ordinance Resource Books. What is, this is listed under a code department updates. It says, "City sewer repair completed, new code officer..."
Mr. Sellers?
"...proactive enforcement of junk vehicles," and "co-ordinance resource books are now in place."
I think that would be Ms. Anderson. That was when Officer Garza was here, he had the municipal code of ordinances published and printed, and so we have that available in the community development department.
I would like to have access to that.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Yes, sir, thank you. There's a couple of comments here. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Kyle Gray for joining the PNZ, thank you very much for your services, and one more thing, I did email, send an email to Dr. Daniel Martinez, and thanking him for the services that they provided for, and getting the Red Cross involved with our city. You know, my front door neighbor was jumping with joy with the new smoke alarms. And one last thing, there's an old Army Cadence song, "Is this two more months?" It's over you. Thank you. One more I give. Mayor, I can have one more?
Okay, I can show you.
Yes, just on, that reminded me, Mr. Robert, if we can get the city to acknowledge the American Red Cross and Dr. Danny Martinez for their efforts they put into it, it was, in my opinion, a phenomenal event and something that we definitely grow with. I would love to see the city put out a letter of appreciation to Dr. Martinez and the American Red Cross. Thank you.
There is no executive session, so if you have no other questions, we're gonna go ahead and, there's no re-convening from the open session, so we'll go ahead and have a motion on the floor for adjournment, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, Counselor Burton made a motion to adjourn. The other, Counselor Sines is second here, time will call a vote, Counselor Burton?
Yes.
Counselor Sellers?
Yes.
Counselor DeSain?
Yes.
Counselor Sines?
Yes.
Counselor Burton?
Yes.
Okay, great, bye. Thank you everyone for coming, have a nice evening, we're welcome to our next council meeting, and folks again.
So, let me say this one more time. Mayor, if you could say the time, please?
Oh, yes. What's that? Time is, I want to be exactly 8:05 PM.